Just hand this over.
Here you go.
All right, thank you Haley. And we'll do what we can to uprate this meeting as expeditiously as possible, so we can finish by five o'clock, okay? All right, thank you Haley. And I'm calling this meeting to order at 3:37 PM. We have finally have a quorum. Three to five members or committee members are here, plus the chair. Mr. Key was unable to attend today. And Mr. Townsend has been unable to attend through the month of March. He'll be back in April. So let's go with an election of officers here. So obviously, I'm the chair. Gordon, you've been the vice chair. Did it with anybody else like to assume Gordon's position? Or Gordon, are you the more than happy to remain as vice chair? I'm totally cool with it myself.
Well, depends on what Don's Claudia's yet volunteered before.
Yeah, I'm happy. I'm making life easy. I'm willing to act as secretary. But I think you guys, I've been in too much where I'd rather me a little more not right in the center, as it were. You know, I've had my shot there. So I think it would be better if someone else were vice chair. Gordon, you've been the job.
Yeah.
Or we could stick Jim or Ted with the job if we wanted to. I don't think.
We should probably go ahead, have a motion and a second and a vote.
That sounds like a good.
Anyone wish to make the motion that Gordon is vice chair?
Yeah, I salute.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. So committee member Howell.
Vote yes.
Ms. Claudia Harmon Worthen, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mr. Heinrichs, how do you vote?
What's my choice? I'll go for it again, I guess.
You have three choices. Okay, so three votes yes, two abstentions. All right, let me see, Don, you're gonna be doing the minutes, so I don't have to write anything down. Is that what we're saying here?
That's correct. The minutes will be, they'll be action minutes. So I'll just keep track of the motions that pass and the vote counts, basically.
Okay.
Most of the interesting material here can still come out in your own reports, I think, to the board. So all I'll do is record the official actions, if that's.
That's fine.
Let me just mention, as I've watched your meeting, the last meeting you had, and I could see where you you really did need a secretary who could just keep track of the motions. Because there was one where the motion kept morphing around and shifting. And if you had had somebody who was writing it down, and the chairman, that's too much, because he's got to keep track of everybody. So to have Harry writing the stuff down as well, I think it kind of caused a problem for you. So I'm happy to take that role.
Thank you. All right. And recording secretary, it seems like we already have, we now have someone willing to assume that role. So do, will I hear a motion to?
I make a motion to elect Don as the recording secretary.
Cool.
I second it.
All right. So let me call the call the role here. So Ms. Harmon Worthen, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mr. Heinrichs, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. So and Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Right. So once again, it's unanimous with two abstentions. All righty, let's.
Okay, those are those two.
On to the ad hoc committee report. I don't believe we have any ad hoc committee report at this time. So the chairman's report, I'll make it quick, even though we're running very late. I think all of you probably know that recently, the Board of Directors had their twice a year strategic plan meeting. You know, we had the the public forum with folks attending on the 30th. And then we had our meeting from 8:30 to about 3:30 on the 31st. And I think the one thing that I want to point out, as much as anything, that the end result and Board Director Scott was certainly involved in this. We have come up with a more detailed and action oriented description of the various strategic goals and objectives that the board and with the board will be having. So I just want to mention that anybody that wants to look at these that is attending the meeting right now, although there's only one person, but anybody that might be watching this in the future, you can see these changes in the minutes of the meeting of January 31st, beginning on page 79 through page 88. And that's in the agenda packet, like I said, for the, it's in the agenda packet for the Board of Directors meeting of Thursday, February 16th, where we approve the minutes of the meetings. So I encourage folks to go and see that because they the strategic plans and how they're expressed now are much different than they've been in the previous previous year and a half. So there we are. With regard to committee member communications, does anybody have anything that likes to communicate before I go on and say something? No? All right. So I just want to mention that this coming Saturday, there's going to be a pancake breakfast fundraiser for the skate park for the group Skate Cambria, which is raising the funds for the building of the skate park. So it's going to be at the Veterans Hall this coming Saturday downstairs, where the Legion folks meet from nine to 11. It's just $5. And it's pancakes, as well as an egg and a sausage and orange juice. So if you wish, you don't feel like cooking on Saturday morning, and you feel like donating on Saturday morning, there you go. Moving on now to public comment. So no one from the public who is attending is able to make public comment. Let me go directly to, got way too much on my screen here. All right. So we have, I have four written comments. Let me start with the first one. And this is from Linda Prentice. And she has been sending something in every month, usually very similar or the same. So Linda Prentice and her written comment is, please consider allowing 50 water meter holders to build each year for two years to test the effect on the water supplies. Thank you. So that was Ms. Prentice. Now I have something from Lauren Younger. It's the next one that's, excuse me. Lauren Younger, she's a resident of Cambria. By the way, Ms. Prentice is from the town of Cool, California. So Lauren Younger, a resident of Cambria, this is her comment. When I was on the policy committee, we were told to consider only what the Board of Directors wanted us to consider. We had community members attend the meetings, but they were told to give their comments to the Board of Directors, not us, since we were there for the board only. As the policy committee discusses things, the community members should be able to comment in perenn, some have useful perspectives. Unquote, unperenn. Also, it might be reasonable for the policy committee members to be able to inform community members of the pros and cons regarding their suggestions. So their suggestions, I think she means the members of the community, can be altered appropriately for board consideration. This may already be the case. If so, disregard my comments. Thank you. The next one is from, just a moment. It's a written comment from seemed to have misplaced it just a moment. I'm sorry. I thought here. This is from Holly Ledwigs. I would like to request that the acting general manager of the CCSD remind the policy committee members about the existing social media policy, policy 2114 approved by the CCSD on 9/16/2021, that outlines approved guidelines regarding commenting and posting on social media sites about CCSD business by, quote, district employees and district officials, as well as consultants and contractors performing work on behalf of the district, unquote, as stated in the policy's purpose. I feel a formal and annual review of the existing social media policy with members of the standing committees is warranted based on posts and comments that show up on Nextdoor and local Facebook sites by standing committee members with misinformation and unsupported allegations. Two examples come to mind. Misinformation by a finance committee member about components of the most recent Prop 218. The recent accusations by a policy committee member that CCSD is influencing community members' trash bin choices in order for CCSD to benefit financially. A new paragraph. In the interest of CCSD board transparency and greater community involvement, I cannot understand how standing committee members incorrect social media posts slash comments could be anything but harmful to community members' understanding of current CCSD concerns and projects beside being in violation of the CCSD policy on social media communications. I recognize how tantalizing it is to speak from a, quote, official, unquote, position, having, quote, insider, unquote, information, but sharing misunderstood slash prejudiced and incorrect information is dangerous. Since the current and approved CCSD social media policy policy appears to be consistently observed by board members, but not by all committee members, an annual review of the policy with committee members should be beneficial, or could be beneficial, pardon me. Thank you, Ali Ledwigs, homeowner, small business owner, and full-time resident of Cambria.
Interesting. One, two, three, four. Yeah, okay.
Now I have excuse me, written public comment from Jeff Wilson. Who, by the way, he doesn't say it here, but he's on the board, recently was appointed to the Board of Greenspace. Thank you, President Dean and board members for taking my comments. As I've become more informed and engaged with various aspects of CCSD governance the past six months, including regular board meetings and pros, Parks Recreation Open Space, I'm saying. I have observed several themes that I believe indicate a need for policy and process improvement. First theme is a general lack of trust and transparency of CCSD in the community. My observation is this is not subject to debate. It's simply a fact and needs to be overcome. It's unacceptable and unsustainable to have such a level of angst, animosity, and apathy in our community towards our governing body. Second theme related to number one is, is there is significant confusion about policy and process within the board and its advisory committees in all manner of business. I observe this with the Mission Country Waste Rate subject. Again, with more recent processes and discussions related to fire department equipment purchases of roughly $150,000 for the protective equipment and command vehicle, and in particular, the $500,000 for the Type 5 for fire engine. For expenditures of that level, which should be specified clearly in procurement policy, the board should be presented with at least two options, ideally three. A clear financial analysis of these options with acquisitions, acquisition options, cash financing or other. The overall pros and cons of each option, and a preferred option recommended, and why. By the way, I'm reading this for the first time since it just arrived about an hour ago. This is basic governance and due diligence, and should be clearly spelled out in CCSD policy. I see this coming as well in the current debate about ZLD, zero liquid discharge, I'll add that, with GWI. I don't remember GWI what that stands for. It's the company involved with CFD. You simply can't decide on this, even a pilot, without looking at other ZLD providers and other solutions, preferably driven by an RFI, an RFP process. Lastly, in looking at the checklist of policies included in the agenda packet, many areas lack policy or are in major need of updating, so I applaud and support an exhaustive review. I'm no expert on this, but I'm not convinced an internal review is appropriate and will yield the improvements in trust and transparency. I know you, oh, excuse me, and will yield improvements in trust and transparency I know you all want. I believe it would be appropriate to at least consider a LAFCO Municipal Service Review to accomplish your objectives. This is the organization that formed CCSD originally and last conducted an MSR in 2014. I realize there's a lot of history in all this going back decades, but it's time to clean the slate with a third-party review and recommendations to update and tighten CCSD policies on the current realities for CSD governance. Thank you. Well, that was certainly a mouthful and then some.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. We might have to review that piece by piece at some point in the future. Maybe as an agenda item. So there we are.
Can I ask a quick question? What is ZLD, zero something?
Oh, zero liquid discharge.
Zero liquid discharge.
And what is, what is that?
It's a process where the brine waste is condensed into some type of mush. Where the brine waste, instead of being sent off every time we have to operate the facility, and it could easily become 50,000 gallons fairly rapidly, this would condense the brine waste to the point where it would, like I say, only become mush and maybe sent off once a year. It's a financial consideration ultimately, as well as an environmental. Okay?
Thank you.
Interesting.
And GWI is the company that does this kind of work?
Global. And I can't recall the name of the company right now. Maybe Gordon or Don.
Well, waste it.
Global global waste. No, I don't remember the whole thing. Anyway, let's get on with the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. Anybody have any, anybody wish to approve the rate, the meeting minutes from January the 26th, 2023?
I so move.
Right. Do we have a second?
I'm the only one here with a second minute.
Yeah.
Don wasn't present.
I wasn't present, so I don't feel that I have to abstain on this. You'll still have a majority of those voting, so I think you'll be okay.
Except that we don't have a majority voting. So we have a majority of the people are here voting, but.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, let's just, let's just put off approving the regular minutes for January to the March meeting.
Okay.
So, all right. Moving on to regular business. Item 3A, discuss and consider the role of the policy committee as per Board Bylaw 1.7.3. So first, I believe I need to kind of apologize, because I was in error. We have the board bylaws in our agenda packet. What we really needed was the standing committee bylaws in the agenda packet for a reasonable discussion of this item. So I think we can still do this. So Don, you have the information that we need to observe to make a reasonable have a reasonable discussion and decision on this particular item. So the first thing that we're going to do is, Don, you can share your screen with regard to the original version of 1.7.3. And then you can pull up what it is that Gordon recently submitted at our, I believe it was our December meeting. And then we can have a discussion of both of those, and then decide which one is most appropriate for us to forward, I believe, to the Board of Directors for their approval. So if you don't mind.
Okay, I can go ahead and share here. Let's make, okay, see if we can get this work here. Just a second while I get it. There it is. Okay. Now, let me see, I don't know what, because I don't see the same thing you guys see. Are you seeing this? This is?
Scroll down. We had it right there.
I just wanted to be sure that we were all looking. Okay, so here it is. Policy Committee, there we are.
You went past, oh, there we are. Okay, cool.
So it's big enough, everybody can see it? Okay?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Okay.
Now, this is the original one that Gordon refined.
Right. And then we have, does everybody already, because I can't share both things, so you all and from your, what's the word, modified agenda packet? Do you all have the copy of Gordon's?
It's in the, it's in the agenda packet?
I emailed it to all of you.
Oh, yes, yes.
So it's not in the agenda packet?
It was added to the agenda packet, I believe, yesterday.
Yeah, it's not in the packet if you picked it up from the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. First I thought.
We looked at Gordon's document last time, so I'm in total favor of what he wrote, so I don't even.
Let's just take a look at this real quickly. One of us can read it, or I think maybe it ought to be read. And then we can go on to Gordon's and reflect on which one we wish to have. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and read this. The policy committee shall, A, review existing operational and governance policies that the board has identified as required assessment, update, organization for consistency with other existing policies. B, identify potential areas of policy needs not currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook, and develop needs assessments regarding impact due to lack of policy and immediacy of need. The committee chair shall provide the needs assessment to the board members for consideration. Board members, not the committee. If determined that a policy is required, the board will assign a board member ad hoc committee to define the policy needs and parameters. The result and policy parameters will be brought to the board members for consideration, and as needed, directed to the appropriate resources for policy development. That's quite a mouthful. And C, support other standing committees' policy review needs. So thank you very much, Don. Now, if you could bring up the amended 1.7.3 that was provided to us by Vice Chair Heinrichs.
Okay, let me, sharing is pause. Let me see for a minute where I am here. First, I think I have to stop the share, so here we are. Locate the other one here. Just a minute.
7.3.
Yeah, let me get it. When did I add it here? Hold on a second. I need to bring up the email. Take me just a minute here. Where did it go? I'm looking for, oh, I know, here we are. Okay, here's the amended packet. No, 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 no. Okay, now, now I've got it. So now I need to share the screen again. Can you do that? Here it is, okay. And here we go here. I think this is it, yeah. Okay. All right. So everybody can see this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, cool.
So I'll go ahead and read this, if nobody minds. The policy committee shall, A, review current existing CCSD operational and governance policies. Revise them for consistency with the CSDA sample handbook, CCSD bylaws, and other existing policies. B, identify policy areas not currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook. Develop needs assessments and timelines of need due to lack of policy.
Timeliness.
Pardon me?
Timeliness, not timelines.
Oh, timeliness, I'm sorry. Develop needs assessment and timeliness of need due to lack of policy. The policy committee chair will present the needs assessment to the CCSD board for approval. If the board accepts the policy committee's assessment of need and timeliness for a policy, the CCSD board will direct the policy committee to form an ad hoc committee to write the policy in consultation with the CCSD general manager, appropriate CCSD staff, and understanding committees as appropriate. The written draft policy will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration for adoption as CCSD policy. And finally, C, support other standing committees' policy review needs. So all of, obviously Gordon's is much more, how can we say it? Up to date, more concise, more detailed and specific, while at the same time, less wordy. So Gordon, you've done a really good job here.
So the only difference is the B section. A and C are the same.
Well, A is a little different. I just look. I think it might be good to go to A first, because there is a couple of if you don't mind, is that okay?
Let's go to A and discuss that.
Okay. Oh, but, I mean, I speak. I'm just jumping in here. Sorry, Harry.
Yeah, that's, the chair recognizes committee member Howell, and let's leave this on the screen for a while.
Okay, we'll leave it up here so we can look at it. And I can also make modifications if we, it's a PDF, I can't really do that. So.
That's right, A does change a little bit, correct?
Little change. And I have a question, I guess, Gordon. I like the whole thing. I think it's certainly far better than what we had originally in those bylaws. But I'm a little puzzled when you say, okay, reviewing of the existing operational and governance policies. What did you mean by revise them for consistency with the sample handbook? I'm not clear on that one. Could you, can you stand on that a little bit?
Well, the intent is to compare the two and determine if they're consistent with each other. I think when we had in your summary of policies, there are some that the policy handbook did not agree with the bylaws or other governmental things that needed to be clarified. That was the intent. What we're using today is that consistent with the sample handbook and other policies that have been generated.
Okay, yeah, okay. I thought that might be, I think that.
Might be another word needed in there.
Well, I have a little problem. I mean, if you leave that particular out and you say, well, I think I see where we're getting at, but I think the handbook is only a sample, and it, there's no requirement that any district actually have those policies in place. So I'm not sure that there's two issues involved with that particular sentence. So I'm, first, I'm not clear that, and I kind of doubt that the board would go along with saying, yes, let's change all our policies to make them the same as what's in the handbook. So there's an issue there. But then in addition to that, if you're asking the committee to actually revise existing policies, wouldn't it be better to say, recommend to the board revisions? Because the policy committee can't in itself revise district policies. Only the board, because we, nor can, just like this committee cannot adopt. A district policy. The board has to do that. So I would think that what you would probably, even if you left the consistency with the CSDA handbook in there. You would, you could say recommend revisions. Consistency with, you know, that might get, and the board could decide or not. I mean, and, and maybe that's the best way to leave it because. There might be an issue where they, we should be able to tell them. Gosh, this policy doesn't really comport with the same as what's in the sample handbook. What about that, you know? Or perhaps you could consider it. So that, at least I would recommend that change possibly as, as, uh.
So recommend revision of a specific policy for consistency with.
Yes, I, I would say at the very least that should probably be in there. Unfortunately, I don't have the ability here to, uh, because this is a PDF. Um, if you give me a minute, I can, I don't think I can, I can make revisions here without. But plus you guys need to discuss it first anyway. Maybe while you're talking, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll generate a Word document that I can actually make modifications to. So I, I yield the floor for a minute.
Harry?
Yes, Gordon.
The first sentence says, review current existing CCSD operational and governance policies. That doesn't say necessarily bylaws. What that refers to is their existing handbook with policies. And then revise them for consistency with the CSDA sample book. And CCSD bylaws and other existing policies. So we're not changing the bylaws necessarily. We're trying to make consistency for a handbook for. The CCSD board. And the original intent of the policy committee was to make a CCSD policy book. With no limitations. It was our. Event was to go through all of them and appropriately write them up and then they would approve them. So that's what I'm saying. We were very limited. What this is trying to say is what's existing. We should be able to review those existing policies and check with the other. Uh, policy such as bylaws and verify that they're all consistent. It doesn't say we have to use all the CSDA sample handbook policies, my intent anyway. So. Would say revise them is not relating to the. Bylaws, it's relating to the existing CCSD policy book.
Oh, well, wait a minute. Okay. Oh, pardon me. Uh, Harry, may I speak? Um, review. Okay, so do I understand you, Gordon? Let's see. Revise them for consistency. Well, here's the deal. There is a CSD, you see, CSD handbook.
Right.
Okay, which is not the same as the CSDA sample handbook.
Correct. That's right.
So are you? But so consistency, in, in other words, are you saying that if, if in our handbook, there is a policy? And if that policy is different from a similar policy, that is, let's say the topic, let's say. For example, uh, let's say, uh, a, uh, a policy on the use of credit cards. So let's say that, are we saying, is it that? If we have one policy for use of credit cards in our, in our handbook. Are you saying that that policy needs to be identical to the policy recommended in the sample handbook? Is that what you're saying?
Not exactly.
Okay.
If it's not an appropriate policy. That should match what it's supposed to be doing, should be the same. As I mentioned in the, your summary there. All your policies, a couple of comments where the bylaws don't match the policy. And you had to override whichever one was correct. I'm sorry, that's where I took it from.
Oh, okay.
I didn't mean necessarily to match the CSDA sample handbook, other than there, there should be. Each policy should stand on its own and be, if it's appropriate, part of the CCSD policy. And. Match the bylaw according. A lot of the comments we run into is they'll say, for example, there's a policy that, uh. CCSD board says that they're existing already in the bylaw, so therefore we don't need a policy. That should not be correct. It should be a policy to match the bylaw.
Or could it not be that, I think, but, oh, I see, I see.
Have a policy book. We'd have a bylaw book.
Yeah, yeah. Revise them. Operational governance policies revise. About this, uh, for, forget the handbook for a minute. Just say, look at CCSD's operational and governance policies and revise them for consistency. Or recommend revisions for consistency with CCSD bylaws and other existing policies. Because that is true. There are inconsistencies. You're absolutely right.
That's where I was getting to.
So what, what you're doing, excuse me for interrupting, is basically removing the CCS, CSDA sample handbook.
That, that's sort of what I'm hearing. Yeah.
Well, it is, but that's. Our intent is to make a. Handbook.
Right.
The SDA is an example.
Yeah, I think where I'm having difficulty and where I think your, uh, Harry's fellow board members may is, is. The implication as it's written suggests that if there is an inconsistency with the sample handbook, that that inconsistency should be corrected. And I don't think the board is going to accept the.
Right.
But all the. Are, are ones that the board would necessarily agree with.
Right, move the CSDA sample handbook as other existing policies.
Yeah, I would just leave C, C, CSDA sample handbook out and say. The, basically the bylaws and other existing policies, they should all be consistent. We agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, and personally, I'm still trying to figure out a way to modify this. Uh, why don't you talk for a little, a little more, when, let me try to do this where I can get it to where I can actually edit it.
Okay, I'm trying to remember what it was that, um. That was stated earlier. I know I'm, say, review, see. CCCSD operational governance policies. Um, and then it was, oh, was it re?
Recommend.
Recommend revisions of policies for consistency with.
Yeah.
Well, the policy says, review existing operational and government policies that the board has identified. As required assessment, update for organization for consistency and other existing policies.
Yeah, I, I.
What they're saying is they want the board to identify these things that they want. Not necessarily what the sample policy book says should be considered.
Got it. Yeah, and I agree with you on that. So I think we're, I think we're in agreement. It's just a matter of.
Right.
The word.
May, maybe, maybe you could leave in the CSDA sample handbook, um, but just. After that, take it out where it is and then put another sentence in at the end that says something about, um.
Referencing to CCA, CSDA sample handbook?
Uh, something like that. Yeah, something that says, um. You know, something about using the CSDA sample handbook as guidelines or something like that. I don't, you're using the, the state. You know, because it's a state organization, you know, you could say this, you know, I don't know, that using, using the CSDA handbook as, as, uh, recommendation. I mean, as, uh, uh, guidelines. So I, I, I think, I, I don't, I like having that in there because. You know, like Gordon said, our original intent was to, to, to create a book that kind of like the, um, the CSD handbook. And we were going through that, you know, Don was, Don, you were there. Um, so I think that. I, I'd like, I'd like to keep that in there in some way, um, because it is. It is part of our intent is to use that as a guideline. I mean, it's something that's. You know, it's, it's just, it's just something that's been worked on and, and, and agreed upon by a lot of people, you know, so.
Well. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the existing. I'm sorry, Claudia, here I'm just jumping in. I apologize. Were you finished talking and then I should have asked?
I was done, yeah.
Uh, uh, Harry, may I speak?
You're good.
Okay, fortunately, there's so few of us that it's not too disorganized, but I apologize. Um. I see what you're saying is you're suggesting, but. I don't think that this committee or necessarily the board should feel. The CSDA sample handbook is a resource, but it is nothing more than a resource. It's, it has no legislative. Um, quality at all. In fact, they do periodically revise it. It's simply a set of recommendations of what good policies might be. Uh, and we, there is other, there are other. Um, there are board actions which have, and, and that has not been rescinded, by the way, either. There are board actions that says that we should be, we could be using as it, it actually. Uh, it actually comes down in B, uh, it identify policy areas not currently addressed. Ah, okay, I have, I have a way to get around this, Claudia.
Oh, good.
Uh, if, if we said in that sentence, in B, we said identify policy areas not currently addressed in the CSD. Policy, CCSD policy handbook, using the CSDA sample handbook, handbook as a guide. Would that satisfy?
I'm good with that. Yeah.
Gordon, are you happy with that one?
Yep, I'm just trying to get the two together.
Okay, Harry, are you happy with it?
Um. At present, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and put that in and then we can, uh. I'll, I'll fix it later as a guide. So if we do that, then we have it in there.
Right.
And then if. And, and then back to A, then if we just said revise, let's see, review current policies. Blah, blah, and recommend, uh, revisions as, re- recommend revisions. Or consistency with.
Yeah.
The CCCSD bylaws and other existing policies and take the sample handbook out at that point. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So recommend. For consistency. With. The bylaws and other existing policies, recommend revisions. Uh, we can be, we can beef this up a little bit, re- recommend revisions as needed or some. But does that, does that kind of express?
I think it's fine the way it is. You don't need to, you don't need to soften it, I don't think. It's just.
Okay, let me, let me do that.
It is a recommendation already, so.
Recommendation, you're right. So, uh, okay.
When you said as needed. That doesn't sound like a bad idea.
Wait a minute.
And then revisions as needed?
No.
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 Needed, that's a different context.
Yeah.
The policy said it needs it, or the current policy, or correction, the current, uh, CCSD board decides they don't need it. And then the next board says, hey, gee, we needed this. Okay, but I don't know, my thought.
All right.
I agree.
Okay, that's two. Okay, so Harry, so we leave it as is for the moment then?
Yeah, no problem. Let's move on.
Are you ready for B?
So.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any way, uh, Don, you could make this a little bit bigger? Can you like enlarge the type or something?
And here, hold on a minute. We'll just zoom in here. Let's go to two hundred percent. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um. Present the needs assessment. Oh, yeah, I like this pretty much, Gordon. You know, it's, it's certainly, uh. Certainly better than what was there. Um. Yeah, I just have one comment. Uh, and it has to do. With, when, if the board accepts the assessment of need and the time. Uh, and the assessment of need and the assessment of timeliness. Then the board will direct the policy. Now here, I'm not sure that. As a, we really want to be restricted to only doing this as an, an ad hoc committee. Because there might be situations where we could just use the whole committee. Say it.
Right, right.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, just, just remove, uh, to form an ad hoc committee.
Got it. Raise, okay, to, to direct the policy committee to. Write the policy in consultation. I like, this is fun, with the general manager, staff and the understanding committees as appropriate. That's very nice. And then the written draft will be presented. I like it. Everybody else? Okay, I've got my say.
It's great.
Okay.
I have only one. Point that, uh, that's, I think maybe a little wordiness, if the board accepts a policy, the assessment of needs and timeliness of policy. That's what's set up above, I believe, right?
Yeah, recommend revisions. Oh, this was in the old one where, uh, I love this sentence in the old policy thing. It's amazing. Develop needs assessment regarding impact due to lack of policy and immediacy of need. I'm so glad you got rid of that sentence.
Right.
Yeah, so let's see that. Needs, okay. If the board accepts the, the assessment of need. And a timeliness. I don't know if we need the timeliness in there. Do you think, uh, for a policy, the assessment of need of the. Direct to write such, to write the policy.
We can leave out timeliness.
Leave out timeliness?
Yeah.
Okay, see if that. Of need for a policy. I actually like that, yeah. The assessment of need for a policy. Then the board will direct the committee to write the policy.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
In consultation with the, the manager and CSD staff and other, other standing. And what you say, another standing committees as appropriate, that's, that's fine, but then you also say support the standing committees' policy review needs, so. Uh, maybe that needs to be more clear in, in number C, how that's different from, um, and other standing committees as appropriate.
Okay, well, it's, that is different. Yeah, I agree with you. Understanding committees as appropriate. Written draft policy will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration for adoption as CCSD policy. I think that's.
Don, if you could, uh, maybe put this all together, I mean, we see how the lines are kind of separated and.
Oh, yeah, let me do that here. Let's see.
Make it pretty.
Minute to make it pretty here. These carriage returns there. For approval. Actually, this is a new paragraph here.
Well, if you. Should we have a C? Or, or.
See down here.
Should, should that, if the board accepts, should that be a C? Or should that be all part of B?
That's a good, interesting point.
Why don't you move assessment up after needs, please?
Oh, up here.
Line three on, on B.
Three, oh, here, oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Like that.
Even though you've got a little widow, widow maker here at the bottom, but. A little widow, I should say. I think that's what they call it when it's just.
Yeah, like here, yeah, this one.
Not supposed to have one word at the end of a paragraph.
Right, generally don't want that.
Let's not worry about that right now. Let's try to get the text on this first.
You got some of the weird lines going here. So are we okay on the first sen, the first two sentences?
Yeah.
Okay, times of need do lack of public, the little sentences, blah, blah. Um.
Can I, uh, this is very technical, I'm sorry, but after it says. Yeah, identifies, identifying policy areas not currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook. I think there should be a comma after that.
Good, okay. Like it. And then to identify, develop assessment. Present assessment. And then if the board, then this is what we do if the board accepts the assessment. And on one hand, I see, you know, Claudia, it is sort of separate, but it's also sort of related, so.
Yeah.
The C, I think, is the intent of the finance committee or the INR have a question. They can come to us to support their needs for making a policy instead of them doing their own policy.
Right, or sometimes they actually do produce, like, finance committee, I mean, we might, you might not want to get in too much of the weeds. And some of the financial stuff can get pretty, pretty dry, uh, but what we're asking, and I think. I don't know, yeah, this was just in there because it, it was, it was. I don't know, yeah, this was just in there because it, it was, it was recognizing that policies can arise from, not just the policy committee, but other entities could be creating policies. And we would want to review them to make sure they're consistent with the thing. I don't know about that one, but it's different than the issue before, which is because we're trying to say, we're not going to do this in isolation, right?
Correct.
We're not gonna just sit on our high mountain top and, and dictate to people what they should be doing. We're gonna actually go out into the, into the, uh, the wilderness and, and seek out.
Okay, so what if, what if we, um, because it kind of seems redundant, what, what if you take out the and, and the other standing committees as appropriate, what if you change, who moved that down to C? And then made that all one part of the pol, you know, one thing. So, so you're talking about the standing committees in one, in, in C as opposed to both B and C? Or does that, does that not make sense? I
Yeah, I'm not quite getting that, because
I, I personally think it's fine this way.
Okay.
Well, then we need to fix C because C sounds like it's just redundant, so.
Let's see, so if we're, if we're good with B, are we good with B? Actually becomes, what do we do with C? And that was in there because we did, we have had, for example, let us say, oh, it's a good one, a finance committee generally creates, it created a policy regarding reserves. So, we don't, I don't think we want to get ourselves in the position of usurping a privilege of another committee, but we do need to keep our, keep our hand in, and that the output from the other committees fit within the whole policy framework that the board has.
Then shouldn't it just be in the same paragraph?
Well, let's see.
Well, part of that is our responsibility was to decide on what section or number they would give that policy, is one of the concerns.
Yeah.
Fit in the book, so to speak.
Yeah, we needed that because they don't, they don't have access to, in other words, what we're saying is the policy committee is kind of the custodian of the whole organization, that the way that policies are grouped, how you can get to them, how you can, and then, and then the other thing is we, of course, and we want to ensure that everything is consistent, we don't have but I think we should still, this is just my opinion, that we should still accept that, uh, it's more obvious with the finance committee, that there will be occasions where policies will emerge from other sources and, and that this committee needs to at least look at those and make sure they're consistent with what is already in place.
But it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that.
Can we make it more clear? Maybe we can explain that a little bit better, or?
I don't know, let's see, because it's sort of covered in A, consistency. Or it might be, I was trying to think, what other policy, or suppose somebody, they, they come up with a policy and they would like us to look at it before it goes to the board. That would, that would, that would
But then you're always, you're already saying you're in consultation with the other standing committees as appropriate, so you're already talking with them about policy.
Right, but
Unless you say, if they come up with the policy, then we would work with them, then, then it makes sense, but quite say that.
Yeah.
Well, we're suggesting as a policy that we're presenting to the board, that we are going to discuss that policy with other standing committees. We don't say, other standing committees can send their policies to us. That's why C is there, I think.
Yeah, that's why it was there, so I'm, I'm reluctant to pull it, but maybe it doesn't fully state the situation, or, or it's purposely, I think it's purposely vague, I think.
Oh. Okay.
Vagueness is useful, so I don't know.
Well, I just think if you added a couple of words in there, you could make it more clear that they would support policies coming from, from standing committees or something like that.
Policy review, policy. Can you
Policies generated by standing committees, or I don't know, something like that, so that it, it makes sense, because to me, it doesn't make sense, it just seems redundant.
Well, wait a minute, though. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Well, I could, I, I could envision a case, if we, if this committee really gets going and starts actually coming up, let's assume that this gets adopted, uh. It's possible, I could see a committee of, let's say, Mara, this would be more, well, if either committee could do this, and even pros could, could come forward, where they say, we have a concern and we want you to review the district's policies regarding this particular issue that we're looking at. And that would, that would be covered under C. Where maybe they're not even creating a policy, but maybe they're not all that pleased with the policies that are there, but it's not anything that we looked at, it's nothing the board has directed us to do, but we are willing and able to do it for other committees if they should ask. So that's kind of, that's sort of where I'm coming from, I think, I don't know, you know.
It seems as if
Can it be both then? I mean, both their policy needs and a suggested policy?
That's possible. Harry, I'm sorry, I
I'm just going to say, it's, there is a, and I think it's already been commented on, there is a slight difference between what it says here and under B and other standing committees as appropriate. That's as if, um, we've gone to them, so to speak.
Right.
Writing policy, and C, it's more like they're coming to us
Right.
to review their needs, and I think that's, that's a minor, but still a distinction, is that correct?
Yeah, that's how I would read it.
I, I, I do too, but I just don't think, it could be just a little bit more clear.
Okay.
Don described, described it, but it doesn't, it isn't described here clearly enough. For me, it isn't.
Okay.
Just add a couple more words in there, I think I'll just fix it, it's not that hard, you know, it's not that
Yeah, well, we don't want to get it too specific to where we start eliminating possibilities, but on the other hand, it does need to be clear. Policy review, policy review, maybe that's where our problem is.
Needs.
Hey, just take the weird review out.
Um, support other standing committees' policy review needs when requested.
No, no, it, it
Well, how about just taking review out?
You can take review out.
It is policy needs.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm good with that, that works. Because it could be, then it's totally open to what their needs are, could be. I like that.
Okay, that's part, okay, but it doesn't, I don't know if it meets Harry's requirement.
That's fine.
Let's take it out and see how it looks. All right. What do you think?
It defines it.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think that's good.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this then, if we do a motion to adopt? Something else, excuse me, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, let, let me, let me just say this, um, since I'm, I believe I'm still the chair. If you don't mind, Don, and, uh, you know, Don and I had a conversation earlier, and you know, Don spent more, spent more time as the chair of this committee, uh, than I have. So, you know, I'm more than willing to allow him to, um, how could we say it, make suggestions to, um, to kind of Yeah, well, we'll just leave it at that. So, Don, if you don't mind, if you would move consult, write in, write the policy in consultation, if you could just kind of move that up there.
I'm looking for the spot, let's see.
Third paragraph under, second paragraph under B.
Okay, so, that's not what we wanted to do, hang on. You know, the line, you know, this, it's just because of the way I put this together, um. How's that? It's a little easier?
That's good. All right, so if we don't mind, uh, would someone wish to make a motion and a sec to approve this, 1.7.3?
Harry?
Yes.
I think we need to call this a policy number. It's not 1.7.3, policy committee is the bylaw, but we haven't assigned it to a number.
It's possible, again, I'm sorry, I jumped in, Harry, I'm sorry.
Uh, if you could, if you could just make your point, uh, a little clearer, Gordon, maybe I'm missing something.
Well, we have section 2100, whatever, for different things, we need a 2300.5 policy that is reviewing a 1.7.3 bylaws, I guess, that's what we're doing.
Well, I think what you're referring to, you say under like 2,000 or so, is that what you said?
Well, what is? There is no policy right now.
Oh, I see, okay, I have, I have a way around this, I think, if I can.
So.
Of course.
Yeah, wait a minute. Didn't you just revise, um, standing committee, standing committee policy 1.7.3?
That's what we just been doing.
Right.
Bylaw.
But it
Not a policy.
It's a bylaw section, so it's a
Standing committee bylaws.
Yeah. This is
We only make policy.
Um, is there a section in the CSDA handbook that has a number or in our, one of our?
So, there was one at one time, and we tried to bring that up, but the, the board suggested they already had a bylaw that covered it.
Doesn't help us with the numbering, so is there something in the CSDA handbook that is a 23 point something, or?
That's what I was trying to find.
Yeah, actually, uh, Gordon, I can help you on that. We do have a 4300 board standing committees, and there's there's policy, and it's, it's our own number, that CSDDA handbook does not have that. Uh, and that's, um, has to do with the, we were requested to do a policy for what to do with, uh, uh, board members who are attending, uh, standing committee meetings, and so that's the policy that doesn't allow them to speak. I think, may I suggest that we because we're right now, we're, we're likely to confuse the board if we go too deeply here, and what we're really asking is a bylaws change. What, Gordon, in terms of bringing it into consistency and whether we want to reflect all the bylaws in the policy handbook, that would be covered actually under A here, as we go through our work, we would come, then we could create, you know, another 43.2 or something.
Okay, fine, I just didn't want to
Yeah.
I just, I just want to state that, uh, when we were making this agenda up, I, uh, contacted Haley and, uh, asked her to include, uh, policy number 4300, and she couldn't find it. Just thought I'd let you know.
Well, thank you, because, yeah, it should be out there. Oh. Actually, you know what? No, I don't know, we'll have to look that up. There's a note in here saying that 4300 is included in the text of the 2022 standing committee bylaws. I think that's only referring to the fact that the bylaws talk about standing committees, but there is a place somewhere where that policy about board members speaking at committee meetings, uh, we'll have to look, look that and see if we can't find that. It's, it's like a two, one or two sentence policy, so it could easily get lost somewhere. So wait, Gordon, was your motion to adopt this? We're, we're, we're back at the motion level, I'm sorry, and I've jumped in again, Harry.
It's not a problem. Are you, are you comfortable? Gordon, it seems like you're comfortable with this, this slight revision of what you, the major revision that you did.
Right. I'm in favor of it.
Yes, Claudia.
Um, I, we do have to kind of clarify, we're going to call this a policy or a bylaw, and I, I don't I, I think that we should have both, and maybe we can call this a policy. I don't know, we, we could write the same thing, one is a policy and one is a bylaw, but I guess in order to get it passed by the, the board, I think we should call it a bylaw since we're making a bylaw change, so.
So, so am I wrong, or isn't this a standing committee part of the standing committee bylaws?
Yes.
So it's just like Claudia's wanting the clarification, so it is a bylaw?
Yeah, this is a bylaw change.
Right.
So I think we probably need to keep ourselves, we don't want to get too far, uh, and the other thing is we wouldn't be able to do what, what Gordon is suggesting, or Claudia is suggesting of assembling this into an actual numbered policy, unless the, uh, board actually adopts this, otherwise we wouldn't have the power to do it, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah.
So is this the 1.7.3, uh, bylaw, or is this, where'd that number come from, the 173?
That is the, that's the existing paragraph in the, uh, in the existing bylaws, there was, there is already there.
Yeah, I, I suggest we did change the title of this to reflect that.
Well, this, this is, this is, this is exactly the way it reads right now.
I just, oh, I see, it doesn't say which it, it doesn't say what it is, it just says that, it just recommended, okay, it's just, never mind, okay, I got it.
And so, um, would someone like to make a motion?
Gordon did.
Prove this revision of a standing committee bylaw 1.7.3.
I move that statement.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, uh, let's have a roll call, Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Ms. Werthen?
Yes.
And Mr. Howell.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Beautiful. And, uh, what we'll do, and maybe as, uh, do we need a motion to uh, direct, uh, the chairman to pass this on to the board so that they can, this needs to be passed fairly quickly on to the board because you don't want them to, that ad hoc committee, you want us to get this before the board's ad hoc committee.
That's, that's a good point, so, Don, why don't you go ahead and make a motion to, uh, for the board, for the committee chair to, um, forward this forward this recommended standing committee, um, bylaw to the Board of Directors for approval.
Good. Recommendation for the committee chair to how did you just say it? This is where I have to take, take note.
To forward.
To, to, to forward.
Recommendation to the modified standing committee bylaw 1.73.
Thank you.
And to modify standing committee by law 1.7
1.3.
For board, for board approval.
Well, actually, I think okay, for board approval, I was wondering if we could ask, if, if we could direct the chair to simply forward this recommendation to the actual ad hoc and see if we can't, because if the ad hoc would adopt it, then, then we're already halfway there, but if the ad hoc comes up with something, and then we're, we go in and ask for a change, then we could get resistance, so I, Harry, I think we can, you can just, we can just ask you to pass this on to the ad hoc. I mean, because it's, the board doesn't have to approve it, this is the policy committee's recommendation.
Okay.
But other way, I don't know, that's, that's my thinking in that, I'm just
I, I, I agree with you, and that's, is that Tom and Deborah, who's on the ad hoc committee?
Tom and Karen, I think.
Tom and Karen?
Hmm, that doesn't make sense.
No, it's, it's, it's Tom and
Michael.
Oh, and Michael.
Michael, yeah, Tom and Michael. Michael will be friendly to this, I think.
It comes from us, it might be, yeah.
Yeah, I said modify to the board, uh, ad hoc, just to the board ad hoc. On, what, what's the name of that ad hoc? It's the ad hoc for, on bylaw modification, I believe. Does that sound specific enough?
I'm afraid I don't remember.
I don't either. We can look and see if there's any title for that. So this is what I have so far then, the motion would be for the committee chair to forward the recommendation to modify, um, standing committee bylaw 1.7.3 to the board ad hoc established for, uh, for, uh, the, the board ad hoc on bylaw modifications, but ad hoc subcommittee.
Subcommittee or ad hoc committee?
I think, I don't know if there's a sub, well, let's call it committee, I don't really know, actually. The board ad hoc committee on bylaw modifications. The board ad hoc committee on bylaw modifications.
That's good.
Okay, so, that's good.
Okay.
So, um, did you make, you just made that motion, Don, is that what we're doing?
Oh, I was.
We've already proved it, we're just wording it.
Yeah, yeah, well, this is, you, you started to make the motion, I slowed you down so I could write it.
Right.
I'll second your motion. The chair can make a motion, I mean, it's okay.
Well, considering the time element here, that, yeah.
Okay.
So let me, let me take a vote. Chair Farmer says aye, and um. Committee member Howell, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay, and uh. Committee member Worthing?
Aye.
And vice chair Heinrichs?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Okay, so Don, if you could, um, if you would please take this off the screen.
Certainly. Save first, I don't lose it, hang on, just, no, I can, I don't, I won't keep you there, I, I'm not going to lose it, I'll be fine. Okay, we're back, hello?
All right, so, um, let's move on now. To regular business item. Three B.
Okay.
I just got. I called, uh. Board vice chair, vice president, Tom Gray, and left him a note. And, um. This was his response. With regard to purchasing policy. Let me, uh. So this was not about. This item. Now, obviously, we do need to review the purchasing policy, we'll get to that, to that in a moment. But initially, this came out of the discussion of the purchase that the fire department wanted to make. About some emergency equipment. However, it turns out, the item was not about a purchasing policy, it was about. Re- removing reserves from the general fund.
Right.
So that's what the discussion ultimately was about, not about purchasing policy. Um, however, uh, we do need to take a look at revising. Um, the purchasing policy, since it's the, I'm sure we had the date here at. Let me find it real quick, um, purchasing policy. And everything associated with it was initially adopted. Twenty fifteen. So it's been seven and a half years. Since purchasing a policy and other policies associated with it uh, were adopted. So we definitely need to, um. Review the purchasing policy at some point.
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Uh, so we have a needs assessment, so should we make a motion to move forward with a needs assess- assessment for twenty one thirty five?
That's a possibility. I think it'd be fairly, I think we could do it, uh.
I mean, don't we just request that we write a needs assessment, or do we have, or can we do the needs assessment?
According to the way, the way I read our current bylaws, we, we can do the needs assessment, we don't need permission to do the needs assessment. When we start to write policy.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that, so we should go ahead and uh, do this ourselves.
Okay, so should we do that right now? It, it's a four fifty one. I, I'm sorry, but you know, I'm willing to go a little late if you guys aren't, so we can do, you know, maybe move forward with this, but. I, I would think that we want to have something in mind bef- before we come to the meeting. Um, unless you guys have all written something, because you were better prepared than than me.
I have an idea, can I offer a suggestion, Harry?
Go right ahead, Don.
Uh, I think I could volunteer, tear myself and Ted Key. To, between now and say in the next two weeks, let's see, when's the next board, uh, the. The board, it's how many weeks do we have between now and the board meeting that comes right before the policy committee meeting?
The one that goes about three weeks.
Three weeks, so I think Ted and I, within that period of time, could come up with a needs assessment. But of course.
He's already offered to work with you in this regard.
Yeah, so. If, if, I, I have it, yeah, because the, the committee here, if you, if you agree, in other words, if you say, yeah, do a needs assessment. I don't think you need to pass on the needs assessment, in other words, we can go ahead and do the needs assessment. And simply forward it to the board, that is, and we could in an unofficial way, you know, consult with the rest of you. But I don't think you would need a next, another committee action, once you've uh, asked us to go ahead and do the needs assessment. In time to present it to the board on its ex meeting, on the second meeting of uh, March.
That's great, and my only comment is that I hope that you include um, the environmental impacts in a needs assessment. I think it's kind of, we wanted to have a, a policy by itself, but I think as we write policy, we should consider those things and maybe just adopt them in. In each policy, be considering, um, you know, if it's buying a new truck or whatever, you know, um.
Could be electric or whatever.
Yeah, so I think that maybe instead of trying to get a, a climate change policy. Maybe if we just include it in the policies that be right, it might be more palatable for the board, I don't know, we have a new board, so maybe they think a little differently, but.
Well, right now, the climate change policy is in the hands of the R and I committee.
Right.
We can, you know, we can look at that as part of the, uh, I think there, if memory, uh, the last time Ted and I went through this. Been a, a war, maybe a year and a half ago. In fact, Ted and I did quite a bit of work, passed it on to John, and that was the last that we ever saw of it. So, um, I do seem to remember there's some stuff in there about purchasing decisions and what, you know, should. Enter into, because there's issues about women owned businesses, about local businesses and when. And suppliers, so there, I think there may be some verbiage, and if not, there's certainly a space for it, so we could. So if, if, yeah, so anyway, Ted and I are quite willing to go ahead, and I think within a two week period or. So, or possibly, certainly before the uh, next board meeting, we could definitely.
Yes, go ahead, Gordon.
One of the other points of interest during that meeting was obviously had to do with the fire chief. And his proposal for the goods that he was looking for. Having bids and whatever criteria. And he, from what I gathered from the board's comment, was he didn't follow the policy. But I can't find anywhere in a policy where it relates. Anybody else having to do all this.
He, he made the point that he didn't see where there was a policy applicable to his actions.
That's where I was trying to relate here, that, but it's insinuated from, I gather from Tom, that there was a policy. And if there wasn't one, they're going to make one up before they gave it to him.
Yeah, well.
But, so, that's why I just want to make a comment, or we want to include that policy part, not just because it's coming out of the general fund. But what policy relates here, because you're supposed to have three bids theoretically, that's what I read.
Okay, well, let's, well, what we need, we're getting ahead of ourselves, aren't we, a little bit?
Make sure that's included in your needs assessment, that that should be reviewed too.
Okay.
Well, I guess part of the, part of the problem there was that like it was an emergency request.
Right. That over.
Getting three bids when it's supposedly an emergency.
Equipment is the other one.
Well, the, the policy with, about not getting three bids is in the purchasing policy.
Right.
Here, uh, Chief Vincent's response to Tom, who was, who was being, Tom was pressuring, saying, we've got this and you haven't. Given us all the necessary uh, detail, uh, Chief Vincent's response was, well, there is no policy about that. And it's true, there is no policy about that, so, so that was what was uh, issue, so. Permission then to go forward on this one?
Right, uh.
Yes, how are we? How are we going to word? Is it going, it's not going to remain exactly as it is here under three B? Or is it?
Oh, when we look at that.
Now, we're not requesting it from the Board of Directors. What we're doing is, um. Well, first, you and.
Oh.
Are doing the needs assessment.
Right.
Yeah, we, we're, we're, we're skirting the ra- around the edge of the Brown Act, but I think we can get away with it here. Uh, supposedly, we're considering and requesting a needs assessment from the board, when, in fact, we don't really need to ask them for one, we can. Just do a needs assessment, uh, so we're not really doing this agenda item. As I said, we're kind of skirting the Brown Act a little here.
Um, and you say we're skirting the Brown Act because?
Because we're not, we're not requesting and that a needs assessment, we're not requesting the board to do a needs assessment, we're just doing it.
Well, um, so, uh, I guess what you would say is, um. The policy committee is. And the word just escaped my mind. The policy committee is uh, developing assessment. To review the district's purchasing policy, twenty one thirty five.
That works. I think we're still within the, we're still, we're still legal.
Okay. So I hope you don't want me to reword that.
Well, how about this, mo- motion to form an ad hoc? Consisting of Don and Ted.
I don't know if you need to put their names in necessarily.
No, but we, well, no, the, 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 the ad hoc members need to know who they are. Uh, we, and for the moment, just, it could be the two unless either of, uh, the others want to join in right now. Um, but, but since Ted and I already started on this, it shouldn't be too hard, so request, motion to form an ad hoc. Parenthesis, Don and Ted, to develop a needs assessment. Of the.
To review, to review the district's purchasing policy.
Oh, to review, yeah, review. The districts. I'm hoping to read this later, policy.
Twenty one thirty five.
Twenty one thirty five. Uh, and. Do a needs assessment. How's that?
That was in the beginning.
Oh, oh, a little bit of a potion from an ad hoc to do a needs assessment. Well, let me get it in there and we can change it, so wait a minute, this assessment. To present, well, we review it, but the output would be a needs assessment, so we review it and create a needs assessment. To present to the board. At its second meeting in March.
I don't think that's what we were doing.
Oh, okay. Let's try it again then.
If I'm not mistaken, the policy committee is developing a needs assessment. To review the district's purchasing policy, twenty one thirty five.
Got it, I, I, that's important, yeah, develop a needs assessment to do a, uh, to review, let's see. Motion to, it's to. Develop a needs assessment to review. I think that's how you did it, right?
That, that makes sense.
Okay, let me read it back to you here. Believe me, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the recording as soon as it's available, and make sure we get this right. So, motion to form an ad hoc committee. Develop a needs assessment. To review the district's uh, purchasing policy, twenty one thirty five. And I, I, and, and you want to, and present that and, and have it ready to present to the board at its second meeting in March.
No, I don't think we need to do that.
Well, I mean, we could take forever.
As soon as possible.
As soon as, well, that could be never, I mean, that's.
As you said, you and Ted could probably have this ready. Um, in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
So we'll just, we'll, we'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so just save it in the next two weeks.
No, you don't need to do that.
We'll just leave it, leave it, leave it open, okay. Gotcha. All right.
So that motion has been made by?
I don't know, sort of some impersonal person here, I'll, I'll make the motion, how's that?
Okay.
Do we still have, uh, anybody else on Zoom?
The only person, the only person attending is Deborah Scott.
Okay, I just make sure.
I don't know whether she's laughing or crying, but she's attending.
All right.
I'll second it, so we can move on here.
Thank you.
Moved by Don, seconded by Claudia.
And then I just have one thing that I would like you to do, and that is to send us the, your needs assessment document before you. When you send it, when you send it to the, to the.
They'll be presenting it to.
Can you copy it to us?
Yeah, that will definitely happen, yeah, we won't just do it, I mean, we need everybody to see it, but we, we, uh, we, yeah. We can handle that and still stay within the brown heck.
It, it's just a needs assessment, it's not a policy, you know, it's just telling them that we think we need to have a policy, you know, it's just. You know, please let us write a policy on purchasing.
Okay, so I believe.
I think we got that.
Did we take the vote already? I don't believe so. And we have to be official.
A motion and second.
So, um. Committee member Howell?
Aye.
Committee member Worthing?
Huh, aye.
Vice chair Heinrichs? Thank you. All right, passes. Let's move on to, um. Item three C, and I'm going to make a suggestion.
The time, the time's up.
Well, we started late.
That's right, we have half an hour.
No, we don't have half an hour.
Oh, okay, we don't have half an hour.
We can make a motion to extend the meeting if we all agree.
I just didn't know.
Started at three thirty three. Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's unanimous, okay, uh, because I need to, I have an, well, doesn't matter what I have, but I have an, I have a, an appointment at five thirty, okay?
You can do this, you know, we can get.
And I have, and I have to walk Chiron beforehand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, uh, with regard to item three C, I feel that this requires, um. The input of the entire committee. And right now, two committee members are not here, so I'm going to recommend, um, prioritizing, you know, the, this item. That we wait until, even though it'd be nice if we could address it right now, uh, we've been putting it off for a while. I'm going to recommend that we postpone this to the April meeting, when we'll have the full complement of, uh, all of the committee members at that time.
And, and I, I have a suggestion, that is, that maybe, possibly you might consider directing us to be prepared, because. To have some suggestions at our next meeting, and maybe that could be forwarded to the other members who are going to be. Coming to that next meeting, so that we're kind of told we have to do something, so we don't. Better prepared.
Now, I believe I already sent out an email suggesting that that be done at this meeting, but I, like I said. In retrospect, it seems to me like, um. Okay, if you, if all of you have come up with suggestions, we can discuss them. At the next meeting, or we can wait until the April meeting, when everyone else is here, and I can encourage them. To, uh, be prepared as well. I personally feel like waiting until April would probably be the wisest move.
I think you're probably right, although I think that people might benefit from just a review of how, how the spreadsheet works, because what. I'm sorry, Harry, again, I dumped in, I, I, I should have waited. Uh, the, the, what's in the packet is really the old checklist that Tom and I worked on. But what you really need, and because the old checklist is really not that useful. What you really need is that proto database, you need that spreadsheet. So, uh, maybe if, if the members could all try to use it, and if you have problems, contact me, and I can actually, we can. Share screens and, and I can talk you through it, so you can understand how it works, and if you have questions. And if you have questions, you could, I could answer them for you just on the one, it's not a meeting. We're not trying to arrive at any conclusion. It's, it's more like a training, if you will. With, is that an acceptable idea? Would that get people?
I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
No. Yes, sincerely, you're, you're definitely the expert here with regard to this extensive spreadsheet. It can be a little confusing.
So you're gonna suggest that we do that at our next meeting or that we have a, a workshop meeting?
Well, why don't I contact each of you individually? I'll send you a note. And if, and then if you just give me, because I, I don't think it'll take that long. But I think it might be more productive if we did it one on one. But I don't think, in half an hour.
Right.
So what I'll do is send a note out and then you guys, and we work out a time that's convenient for us. And we do it that way. We can do it on Zoom, you know, there's no issue.
And that way you can also involve the two members that aren't here today.
Yeah.
If we did a workshop meeting, that would have to be a special meeting where our members of the public can attend. So they can actually see this extended version of the policy handbook.
Yeah. Okay, because spreadsheet training. Okay, so I'm going to just schedule, send out notes to schedule some, just for shorthand. It sounds weird, but call it spreadsheet training. It's, or, or, or it's just the proto database training is what it really is.
Sounds good.
Okay. And when that doesn't need a motion as long as we're all, you know, okay, so I got that one. Give me a day or two to get my. Send that out.
Will give us a day or two to just recover from this meeting.
Okay, yeah.
All right, and item three D. Discuss and consider the creation of an ad hoc committee to review the CCSD policy handbook. Kind of what we're already doing here. And I believe Ted and Dawn have already agreed to do this. So do we want to wait until Ted is here to officially submit his submit his approval to be involved in this?
To, to review the policy handbook.
He's already agreed to do it with you, but maybe it would be good to wait until he's here to approve the ad hoc committee?
I think it might be a good idea because he and I will already be working on the purchasing one. And that's going to take a little bit of brain space. So you know, I would say she probably wait on that because also when you're reviewing the, the policy handbook, that kind of falls into similar, the, the, the whole issue that's raised at C is kind of spreads over to that because.
Right.
So I think they're, they're kind of related. So yeah, probably would be better to wait on that, Harry.
Okay.
So again, just table.
We'll take it. We'll table item three D.
Okay, three D. Okay, what I have here, I have three C tabled until the April meeting. Do you want that one also till the April meeting then?
No, I think the only person that would be missing from the meeting in March would be Jim Townsend.
Okay, so till the March meeting then.
So let's just do the March meeting, right? And I can contact Jim in the meantime and see if he's interested in being on that committee. My guess is N O.
It'd be nice if he would. He'd be very good at it.
He's a very bright guy, but he's got a lot going on in his life right now.
Yeah.
But I will contact him just to make sure, just to let him know how much it would be wanted.
If you want something done, give it to a busy person.
It's true. You wouldn't think that would be true, would you? But it actually is.
All right, let's move on to, if we don't mind, future agenda items.
Okay.
Other than the ones that we just did, does anybody have any future agenda items?
Okay.
I thi- I think that if we actually go, oh no, so we aren't going to do the, no, we're not going to do that till April. So we have room.
Gordon just raised his hand. Gordon, did you have a suggestion?
Well, I think with the new fire chief settling in, I'd like to see a review of the current plans for disaster evacuation for Cambria.
Okay, I know you brought that up in the past, so we will.
I got settled down and I, I met with him, not met with him, but introduced ourselves and we're interested in that policy. And he has some already ideas of what I think he wants to do.
Okay. So perhaps what could happen is either Gordon or myself, as the officers, one of us could go and talk with the chief and get some of his suggestions.
Right, see how we want to put it together, because I still think he's the, the main target, even though he appears as the.
When we're going to do this, he, he would be in attendance of the meeting.
Right.
So yeah, so that sounds cool.
Yes, Don.
I'm, I'm thinking those two, there's two of the public comments that we had that probably deserve a little more discussion. They actually brought up some important points. The Holly Ludwigson's one regarding the social media policy and the compliance or non-compliance by standing committee members. Maybe that is something that we ought to look at, at least review the social media policy and, and to see if what she is talking about is really something that is an area of policy that needs to be addressed.
So that, you know, that's a good idea. And since I know Holly personally, I can give her a call and see if she can provide a little bit more specificity as to what it is that's troubling her.
Excellent, yeah. That would be great, yeah, because she clearly had something in mind, you know. I never go on the social media, so I don't know what she's talking about.
Yes, Claudia.
Uh, she's talking about me.
All right.
I have one other is that the letter from Jeff Wilson, which is kind of rather broad. And I, I think we may, it may have some material in there that we do need to look at, but there's so much, Harry, is it possible? Oh, tell me this, aren't we supposed to, are we supposed to put the written comment, is, we, we include that in our minutes?
Correct.
Oh, good. Okay, because.
I don't know if that's correct, but it would probably be a good idea.
Why not? Yeah, why not?
Usually all we do is, you know, written comments were submitted by so and so.
So well, if you, if you'll pass that letter or the letter's on to me, I'll, I'll assemble them all as into a minutes package.
Okay.
Jeff was raising some important points and I just, with, but without the letter going through and looking at it, it, it looked like it might be something that we would need to address, or, or it may be that he's really right in the same area where we're, because we're talking about reviewing policies. And he's asking for a exhaustive review of policies. So it, it, it might deserve a little more consideration, that's all.
That makes, that's, that makes perfect sense.
Well, that's not true.
Sounds good.
Who said that's not true?
Wasn't me.
It was a passing person here.
Have a, an attendee in the public who is not.
I'm not going to ask what they were passing. Yes, Claudia.
Um, I, I wrote a couple of notes about what Jeff Wilson had to say. And I, and I, I agree that there are policies that he is concerned about. But like the, the lack of trust, I mean, that's not something we could deal with. And as far as the Z L D and the G W I and the F A F, whatever that is, and M S R and all these things. I, I don't think those are things that we, that are under our purview. But, but, but hopefully, you know, Don could reread that letter in detail and, and see if there's anything in there that we do have, you know, jurisdiction over. But I, I, I agree with his concerns, but I don't know if we have any ability to write a policy to help these things. I mean, the rest of the C S D is, isn't a policy, it's, it's an issue. Well, maybe it's a policy. I, I don't think so.
That's one of those could be an R and I request for a policy.
Ah, could be as ordered like that, yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
All right. Well, I want to thank you all for participating in, in today's meeting. And it seemed like we got, we got the most important thing done with Gordon's recommendation with regard to updating the standing committee bylaw regarding policy committee.
Appreciate your support on that and the help rewarding.
Thank you, Gordon.
And thank you for being so patient with me. I, I didn't realize that how late I was until I, I got done and, and I, oh my God, it's three twenty. And so it, I, it wasn't me, it was the person I was with, they ran late, so.
Well, we'll talk about this. I'll give you a call, okay?
Yeah, I will make sure I don't do anything like that, but I, it was, never mind, it just is, it just happened.
I appreciate you all, I appreciate all of you participating in today's meeting. And Deborah, I appreciate you sticking around for almost two and a half hours just to observe this. And at any point, if you want to drop me an email and give me some feedback or call me, that's fine too. All right, everybody, have a real nice evening, a real nice weekend. Enjoy the rain and enjoy the sunshine as well.
And the hail. And I should let you all know that my Sully passed away and I've been having a very difficult time this week. And so if you want to reprimand me, Harry, I wish you'd maybe wait till next week. I'm really not ready to be hearing.
If it means, if it means anything, Claudia, we discussed the passing of your commitment before you arrived.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I meant to, I meant to mention that we all send our condolences to you because we know how important Sully was.
Yeah.
I mentioned that in my email to you as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's tough.
It is tough. So sorry.
Thank you.
Well, I can definitely.
Tell you about Mike, so tell you about Sully. He's just one of the once in a lifetime kiddies that just did amazing things, you know, but.
I remember you talked a lot about him. He was really quite an amazing cat.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody, like I said, have a, have a good weekend and see you next time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Contacting each of us.
All right.
All right, everybody. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Thank you, Don.